We'd like to say good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to the Shreveport City Council meeting. We'd like to just say if you have your cell phones, if you'd be kind enough to put them on silence or if you would put them on, turn them off. At this particular time, we'd like to call Pastor Fred Caldwell Jr. up for the prayer. And we're going to ask that Councilman Jackson would lead us in the pledge. Thank you Pastor, for coming to pray. Vice President.
Let's all pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today, good Lord, asking you to look over our council meeting. Dear Heavenly Father, correct the attitudes of anyone that's not like you, dear Heavenly Father, and that you, in your spirit, will reign over this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if you call Rob, please.
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Corwin. Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher. Councilman Jackson.
Here.
Councilman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Thank you. Just for the record, Councilman Butcher Collins said that he would not be attending today. He's slightly under the weather. Does any, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference Monday, December 12, 2022, and the city council meeting Tuesday, December 13, 2022?
So.
Fueled by Councilwoman Taylor.
Second.
Set in by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote. Thank you, and that passes with four. Does any council member have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
It's the chair.
Yes.
Chief Reese. Are your guests here?
Not yet.
Okay.
We've got 15 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll come back. Any other council member have any guests? I see that my guest is here. Madam Clerk, would you read Resolution 156? Mr. Jerry May, would you come up to the podium, please?
Thank you.
You'd normally be filming. You want me to come and film for you while you?
(laughing).
Give it a shot, why not?
Would you read Resolution 156?
Yes. A resolution honoring Jerry May for his outstanding anchoring and reporting skills. Whereas Jerry May began working in television news when he was in high school, the station in his hometown of Ardmore, Oklahoma hired him to run field and studio cameras and to do some sport reporting. Whereas Jerry May joined KTVS3 News in 2001, and whereas Jerry May, a veteran of television news since 1985, graduated from the University of Texas at Arlington. And whereas Jerry May is interested in political government stories that hold those accountable who pass and enforce laws that affect us all. Whereas Jerry May is also interested in the lives of those who have served our country, especially in combat, to ensure the freedoms we all enjoy. Whereas Jerry May has covered big stories, including the aftermath of Hurricane Katrina in New Orleans, the Northridge earthquake in California in 1994, and a military transport plane disaster in 1995, where Jerry's live reporting earned an Idaho Press Club Award. Whereas Jerry May also enjoyed covering Super Bowl, the Super Bowl in South Florida, where the New Orleans Saints won their first NFL championship. Whereas Jerry May's anchoring and reporting skills have afforded him the opportunity to ride in the cockpits of the Air Force Thunderbirds and the Navy Blue Angels, showing viewers what it's like to soar through daring, high-performance aerobatics. Whereas Jerry May's skills also afforded him the opportunity to participate in the local movie industry. He landed roles in flicks including Will Ferrell's 2012 political comedy, The Campaign, Drive Angry, Super, and Playing for Keeps. Whereas when Jerry May is not on television, you may see him on a local golf course, swimming, and weight training are also part of his extracurricular activities. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convene that the City Council honors Jerry May for his outstanding anchoring and reporting skills.
Thank you Kendra.
Thanks for that.
(applause).
Jerry, we're going to have comments from you, but I'd just like to say from me, thank you for you. I'm honored to do this. I feel that you deserve it. You made me better. And also, I'd like to thank you that no matter the story, that you always called me, whether I responded or not, I'd just like to say thank you, man. And I just wanted to say thank you, and you deserve it. And that's, that's what I want to say. Any other council members?
Jerry, I like those sentiments. The media plays such a critical role in the political process at all levels of government. Your reporting during my term of the council has been a great benefit to the public. I appreciate your diligence, your professionalism, and your good humor despite some difficulties over the years. So thank you very much, and my best wishes to you in retirement.
Mr. May, you were one of the first to cover autism in this community when I was advocating 20 years ago, 20-plus years ago, and you covered my son. And just how important autism is. You would always, in your stories, what, what, what this community need was kindness, compassion, and understanding of an exceptionality that many did not understand. And I want to personally thank you for that.
And also Jerry, one last thing. We're going to have you do remarks, and we're going to come down and take a picture. Thank you for always being a professional. I mean, you are top-of-the-line professional in your business, and I just really appreciate it.
Chair, I appreciate you as well. You've always given me an opportunity to tell my side of the story. I believe media should be transparent. I believe the citizens deserve to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. So just reaching out to me, emailing me, allowing me to share my side of the story. I appreciate that, and we need more of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all on the council, John Tabitha and Allen. And this was a surprise, Chairman Green. They told me in the newsroom yesterday, Jerry, you're on the agenda, and it's from Chairman Green.
Did you almost stink, Jerry?
Would have been probably the last one I would have thought. But I thank you very much for that. And I thank you all for all of your work that you have done for the City of Shreveport. And good luck to each of you, whether you're staying here or moving on to other pursuits. And it's, it's been an amazing 21 and 1/2 years here. I never thought I'd be right here talking, talking to the Shreveport City Council, but here I am. And I'm, I am looking forward to retirement slowing down just a little bit. And I thank anyone who's watching and everyone in the audience for, for their viewership as well. And the good news is, you all never have to worry about not responding to a call, email, or text from me again. So there you go. Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, if I can add something really quick. And Jerry, sorry, I don't mean to get the last word. I was thinking about should add this. A lot of people wouldn't know this, but the first time I had a full-length segment on TV was actually because of Jerry May, and I think it was 2011. I was a captain in the military. I'd just returned from my, it was either my first or second deployment in Iraq. And Jerry hosted me as a hometown patriot on KTVS3. So thank you for that, Jerry. I appreciate you and for everything you've done for the community.
Thank you. I remember that well. So you, you are one of about 600 of those stories that I have loved producing every week for the last 12 years here. So thank you again for your service to our country and to the City of Shreveport. That's probably been, those stories have probably been the greatest satisfaction that I have had in my career. It's given me a greater appreciation of our military and of our freedoms that people like you have provided. And I hope that it has given viewers also a greater, an even greater appreciation of our military and our veterans. Although, as we know, around here in this area, it's already very high. Yeah, thank you.
Jerry, a lot of people not aware that you were in a movie. I forget the name of the movie. What was the name of it?
There's been a lot of forgettable ones, actually. I think about 10 movies or TV shows.
Okay.
But there was a political comedy with Will Ferrell. That's what people have mostly seen me in, and Zach Galifianakis, The Campaign.
Okay.
Yeah, there was that one.
Thank you.
You know what? You can just stop and record. I can't believe Liz Swain is taking my video. We're bringing back all, all the, all the good. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Your class.
Thank you. Very nice, gentlemen. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you all again for cooperating with me, even when maybe the news wasn't the greatest. I still do, I did appreciate you all helping me do my job. Thank you.
Have a retirement.
Thank you. We're still awaiting Councilwoman Taylor's guest. Mr. Mayor, do you have any awards recognition of distinguished guests not to exceed 15 minutes?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Couple of announcements for today. City offices will be closed Monday, December 26, for the Christmas holiday. This will also impact garbage collection next week. We've posted the changes on our website, so visit www.shreveportla.gov. And I'm sure many of you noticed as you was walking into the building that the temperature is dropping, and it's dropping pretty quickly. So city crews have been working hard this week to prepare for possible inclement weather over the next few days. If any citizens experience water problems at their business or their homes, you can call 318-673-5510 or 318-673-7600. I'll say those numbers one more time. 318-673-5510 or 318-673-7600. The City of Shreveport is also very, very excited to be hosting the 46th Annual Radius Technologies Independence Bowl. Tickets are still available for anyone wanting to watch the University of Houston face-off against the University of Louisiana. I want to thank the Independence Bowl Foundation for all that they do, not just with the bowl game, for what they do throughout our community the entire year. And also want to thank the SPAR staff for all that you've done to prepare the stadium for this amazing game and all that you'll be doing at the game tomorrow. And everyone who has been working hard to ensure this year's game is a big success. So good luck to the University of Houston Cougars and the University of Louisiana Ragin' Cajuns. Next, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring up the Fire Chief, Chief Clarence Reese. He has a presentation to make.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, he might, let me see. Wait one second. I think he might still be waiting on some people to get here, so we might have to move it down the agenda a little bit. Yeah, he's waiting. So yeah, Mr. Chairman, if we can move that down the agenda, that'll be appreciated.
Okay. All right. Mr. Mayor, do you have any other communication relative to city business?
No, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my remarks.
Chief, are you a guest here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, good. There we go.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Council Chair, we're going to get y'all out of here. I know you, I know you like to get these meetings done and out of here, so I won't prolong it. Whoever's not here, we'll just have to give it to them later. So.
Do y'all don't mind coming up? Family of Ms. Chloe. Medic 17.
Chief Brandon, excuse me. So this is our first time meeting many of them. Anytime we have citizens in the city that do something extraordinary, we like to recognize them. Ms. Chloe, right here is Ms. Ware. Ms. Chloe Ware is alive because of several of the individuals behind me. Back in July, she was at Southland Park Learning Center and actually drowned. She was at the bottom of a pool. Someone had to go in the pool, get her out, and the people standing behind me were part of that team that revived her. Some people jumped in the pool, some people did CPR, some people did things simply as keeping all of the other kids away to where we could work or they could work. That is what we consider a pit crew approach in EMS. It takes everyone to help save a life. So on this date, on July 4th, a call came in for unconscious, unconscious individual that had been pulled from a pool. I will read the comments from those medics that arrived. Those medics, when they, when they did arrive, Ms. Chloe was, was breathing. So Engine 17, Medic 17, and Truck 17, three units from the Shreveport Fire Department were dispatched to Southland Park Daycare Center for an 11-year-old in cardiac arrest. We arrived on scene, found a 12-year-old female near a swimming pool, and they were doing chest compressions. On arrival, the patient was breathing. Chest compressions had stopped. Patient rolled to the side, and of course, they do what they do after, you know, they let out some fluids. She was scooped up and carried to the medic unit and was transported to the hospital. So those people that are behind me were part of that team, and I'd just like to recognize them real quick. Ms., pronounce the names for me, I'm sorry. Bigum? Who? Okay. Hers Reeves, for your selfless and courageous actions assisting the Shreveport Fire Department with incident number 22199933 on July 4, 2022, at 1,001 Southland Park Drive at the Southland Park Learning Center, you pulled a 12-year-old female from the bottom of a swimming pool who was unresponsive. The patient was breathing upon arrival of the Shreveport Fire Department. Your heroic efforts most assuredly prevented a death from occurring at this incident. You are to be commended for your heroic and selfless actions on scene to save her life. Thank you for your assistance you provided to the Shreveport Fire Department. This is given under my hand, City of Shreveport, this 22nd day of December of '22, Ms. Womack. Ms. Stewart. And Ms., I'm going to go with Courtney. Y'all already knew. Okay, y'all, just right behind me. Okay, and most of these are going to read the same. Several of them, again, were involved in CPR. Some of them were involved in just making sure that everyone, no, no other kids fell into the pool. So they all read pretty much the same. Your selfless and courageous act in assisting the Shreveport Fire Department in this incident on July 4, 2022, at 1,001 Southland Park Drive at the Southland Park Learning Center, you helped perform CPR on a 12-year-old female who was found at the bottom of a swimming, swimming pool and unresponsive. The patient was breathing upon arrival of the Shreveport Fire Department, and your heroic efforts most assuredly prevented a death, prevented a death from occurring at this incident. You are to be commended for your heroic and selfless actions on scene to save her life. Thank you for your assistance provided to the Shreveport Fire Department. This is for Ms. Courtney.
Thank you.
Ms. Stewart. And Ms. Womack. Thank you. And the mother of Ms. Chloe is here also with us. If you'd like to just have a word on Ms. Chloe, if you would like to have a word. These are the people that, of course, acted that day and saved your life. Also, behind, behind you is Fire Engineer Carlton Jenkins and Daniel McDonald, Fire Fighter Daniel McDonald. They are the people that took you to the hospital in the ambulance and made sure that you remained alive. So this is kind of the first time you may get to see them again, and also the people that were there to save your life on that day. Would you like to say anything? No? Mom, would you like to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say thank y'all. I would not have my daughter if it wasn't for y'all.
Trying to cry something?
Um, yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it was the worst nightmare of my life. But I thank y'all, I think like 17. You stayed there with me. You was giving me information at the doctor. I didn't understand that you were telling me what was going on, helping me all the way, and I thank you for that. Some encouraged your words. You prayed for me. I'm just grateful.
Thank you. And that is exactly what we look for out of the Shreveport Fire Department and all of its members, is to go above and beyond. We would like to leave people with the wow factor. The fact that they stayed and made sure that she understood everything the doctor was saying and put it in layman's terms goes a long way. And then from the citizens of Shreveport, going above and beyond, not knowing if any one of y'all could swim, but you, you took quick action to jump in their pool that day, and you went above and beyond. So on behalf of the Shreveport Fire Department, here's a challenge coin. You took that challenge. Thank you so much. Thank you. And Medic 17. Thank y'all so much, appreciate it.[1254.65][1254.68](applause).
Thank you. Councilman Bowman is here. He has a recognition that he'd like to do at this time.
Thank you, Chairman. I just, Fred Caldwell Jr., do you want to come?
Hey Fred.[1297.75][1297.78](laughing).
Clerk, will you please?
A resolution dedicating the 6,800 block of Rockwell Place in honor of Fred Caldwell Sr. Fred A. Caldwell Sr., Bishop Caldwell, was born March 20, 1946, in Shreveport, Louisiana, to Mr. Dawkins Caldwell and Ms. Olive Fay Caldwell. Whereas Bishop Caldwell was called into the gospel ministry on April 24, 1977. He preached his first sermon in Avenue Baptist Church under the pastorage of Pastor Lawrence Daniel Scott on June 12, 1977. Whereas in 1992, Bishop Caldwell received his PhD from Friends International Christian University of Mercy, California, and founded the Greenwood Acres Christian College and School of Ministry. Whereas in 1994, Bishop Caldwell became the first full gospel Baptist church bishop in northwest Louisiana. Whereas during his years of service, Bishop Caldwell increased the size, scope, and influence of the Greenwood Acres Full Gospel Baptist Church. He developed multiple ministries and created a unique concept, One Church in Three Locations. Whereas Bishop Caldwell was a developer of timbered null gated housing, a 20-acre subdivision in West Shreveport. He led the effort to provide food, shoes, fans, and bicycles for the needy. Whereas Bishop Caldwell authored four books entitled, Knowing God, The Righteousness of Faith, Trials and Glory, and How to Handle Your Alexanders: He Did Me Much Evil. Whereas Bishop Caldwell was the president, founder, and CEO of Amistad Communication and host of Know Your Bible International Radio Broadcast and Talk to the Bishop Live Call-In Talk Show. Whereas Bishop Caldwell was married to the former Mary Carnegie, and they had two children, Timmy D. Caldwell Dixon and Fred A. Caldwell II. Three grandsons, Alan Jacob Caldwell, Aaron Joseph Caldwell, and Chase Michael Dixon. Whereas Bishop Caldwell, a well-known figure on Body of Christ Radio, a teacher and one of the founders of Greenwood Acres Full Gospel Baptist Church, passed away on July 22, 2022, at the age of 76. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Shreveport in due, regular, and legal session convene that the mayor on behalf of the city is authorized to dedicate the 6,800 block of Rockwell Place in honor of Fred A. Caldwell Sr.[1436.88][1436.91](applause).
I don't know if you have something you want to say.
Thank you all very much. Because in my words to my father, nobody has to be nice to you. And this is truly, truly a nice gesture. And from him to all of you, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you're, yeah. It's too much, not too much I, I can say that hadn't already been said, but I could repeat one of the things that, that Ms. Kendra just said, and that was a well-known, and I could just leave it at that period. Bishop Caldwell was, 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 was the bishop, you know. You know, we had others to come along, but that was the, the first bishop I knew. And he was somebody that genuinely cared about his community, his church, his, his members, his families, oh God, his family, and his wife. He loved Ms. Mary to, you know, to pieces. And it's not much more than I can say, that he was a true man of God and sorely be missed. Thank y'all for carrying on his legacy.
Thank you.
Come take a picture.
Congratulations, man. God bless.
Fred Allen II. We can go on for days talking about your daddy and our times at Greenwood Acres, but it is indeed an honor, Councilman Bowman. Thank you for honoring the Caldwell family. For observing Fred Allen II.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Fred Jr., you know, your dad had two, two million great sermons, but he had two great sermons that really touched my life. One of them is the blessing of Abraham. It was in 1997. And the other one was men should always pray. And I want to thank you and your family for that man, for you sharing your father with us. Thank you so much, my brother.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Does any members have any questions relative to property standards? Screen, they says too cold. Thank you. MPC provides a master plan. Do you have a master plan report? Thank you. Everyone receive their budget, actual financial report? Sure. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be added today?
There is not.
Thank you. Today, we will hear public comments on agenda items and non-agenda items as well. And the chair will control that end of time. Vice Chair.
All right. Ken Correll? Ken Correll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kent.
Not yet.
Mr. Chairman. Oh, not yet? Okay, because Kent was supposed to be my guest for today. So if he goes over, can you, can we give him some grace?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
It won't take three minutes.
You go, go ahead.
Well, Kent ain't gonna go over anyway.
This is for Jerry, but the mayor-elect may need a good press secretary if you want. No, okay. And my brother-in-law said, I was going babbling at the mouth watching you. And he said, KTVS, Ken's Talking Bull Stuff, but he didn't say stuff. This is a little ditty. 20 to 17, you missed it on the 12. When the Black Knight Sanctified Shipman in overtime.
Yeah, I know. I was watching that, I didn't miss that.
I won a few bucks on it. Okay. This is a poem from 1848. My grandma used to read to me when I was six or seven, and when I was 10, I decided to start memorizing stuff. And it's "The Night Before Christmas." And when I raised my hand, that's for the audience to complete the last word or two of a stanza. "Towards the night before Christmas and all through the house, not a creature was stirring, not even a mouse. The stockings were hung by the chimney with care in hopes that Saint Nicholas soon would be there. The children were nestled all snug in their beds while visions of sugarplums danced in there. And Mama in her kerchief and I in my cap had just settled in for long winters. When out on the lawn there rose such a cloud, I sprang for the bed to see what was the moon on the breast. Away to the window I flew like flash, torping the shutter and threw up the sash. The moon on the breast of the new fallen snow gave a luster of midday to objects below. When what to my wandering eyes should appear but a miniature sleigh and eight tiny reindeer. With a little old driver so lively and quick that I knew at a moment it must be more rapid than eagles. His courses there came and he whistled and shouted and called them by name. Now dasher and dancer and prancer and vixen uncommon on Cupid on Donder and Glitzen to the top of the porch, to the top of the wall. Now dash away, dash away, dash away all. It's dry leaves that before the wild hurricane fly, when they meet with an obstacle and mount to the sky. So up to the housetop, his courses they flew with a sleigh full of toys and Saint Nicholas too. Then in a twinkling I heard on the roof the prancing and pawing of each little hoof. As I drew in my hand and was turning around down the chimney, Saint Nicholas came with a bound. He was dressed all in fair from his head to his foot, and his clothes were tarnished with ashes and soot. A bundle of toys he had blown his back, and he looked like a peddler just opening his sack. His eyes how they twinkled, his dimples how merry. His cheeks were like roses, his nose like a... His drool little mouth was drawn up like a bow, and the beard of his chin was as white as the stump of a pipe he held tight in his teeth. And the smoke it encircled his head like a... He had a broad face and a little round belly that shook when he laughed like a bowl full of... He was chubby and plump, a right jolly old elf, and I laughed when I saw him in spite of myself. A wink of his eye and a twist of his head soon gave me to know I had nothing to dread. He spoke not a word, but he went straight to his work, and he filled all the stockings, and then he turned with a jerk and laying a finger beside of his nose and giving a nod. Up the chimney he rose. He sprang to his sleigh, to his team gave a whistle, and away they all flew like the down of a listle. But I heard him exclaim, and he drove out of sight. Happy Christmas to all and to all...
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have the following executive appointments to be considered today. We're gonna ask that the clerk would read them into the record, and if it's no opposition, we'd like that we vote on all of them together.
Spar Division Manager Sean Houston, Industrial Development Board Carol Smith, Cattle Bojor Port Commission Joshua Williams, Northwest Louisiana Finance Authority Patrick Brown, Shreveport Workforce Development Board Bruce Burnett, Teresa F. Hefner, KCC Travis, Human Relations Commission Sherry Kerr, Reverend Roosevelt Seaberry, and Dr. Michelle Wolkmer.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor.
Second.
Accepted by Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five. Twelve.
Thank you. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction or adoption today. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with regular agenda legislation?
Resolution 141, authorizing a request to be made to the Louisiana Department of Natural Resources, Louisiana State Mineral and Energy Board to seek public bids for an oil, gas, and mineral lease involving the property located in the vicinity of District D and described herein, and to execute the lease for certain mineral interests owned by the City of Shreveport, and to authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents related to the intent of this resolution. And there is one amendment that corrects on page four, paragraph eight. It currently reads not less than $1,500 per acre, and it should read not less than $3,000 per acre. Also on page five, paragraph nine, it reads royalty of not less than 20%. It should read royalty of not less than 25%.
Is there a motion on the amendment? Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Bowman on the amendment. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five. Moved as amended.
Moved by Councilman Bowman. Seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Moved as amended. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Resolution 144, authorizing the execution of cooperative endeavor agreement with Allendale-Lakeside Leadbetter Heights Partnership.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Administration moved to withdraw that legislation.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bowman to withdraw. Then, questions or comments? Let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Resolution 154, dedicating the 6,800 block of Rockwell Place in honor of Fred A. Caldwell Sr.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Cut off.
It's not. Yes.
Motion passed with five.
Resolution 155, authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative purchasing agreement between the City of Shreveport and the City of New Orleans.
That is to be postponed. Motion to postpone.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Bowman. Seconded by...
Seconding.
Seconded by Councilman Nicholson to postpone. Any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Resolution 156, honoring Jerry May for his outstanding anchoring and reporting skills.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman, moved by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman and Councilman Bowman. Are there any questions or comments? Not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Resolution 157, to allocate funds to specific not-for-profit organizations from funds budgeted in other charges in the 2023 Riverfront Development Special Revenue Fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Bowman, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with four.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to January 10, 2023?
Resolution 158, authorizing an agreement between the City of Shreveport and Red River Bend LLC relative to the use of city-owned property. And Resolution 159, approving the 2023 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Jackson. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of ordinance not to be adopted prior to January 10, 2023?
Ordinance 220, amend in section 2-31 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreveport to provide for an increase in the salary of the mayor. Ordinance 221, amend in section 2-32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreveport to provide for an increase in the salaries of members of the City Council. And ordinance 222, to amend section 62-89 and to add a new section 62-93 to Chapter 62, Article 3, Division 2 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to cash buyers at events held in city facilities.
Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance to layover until January 10, 2023? Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading and final passage?
Yes, ordinance 135A, to repeal ordinance 135 of 2022 and to re-adopt an ordinance changing the name of Red Fox Circle and the Moore Girls Circle subdivision in section 25 Township 17 North Range 15 West to God's Country.
Motion postponed.
Second.
Motion by the chair, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor.
Yeah, it's previously been postponed to February 14.
Okay, thank you. Would you continue?
Okay. Ordinance 213, to amend Article 7, Division 4, Section 90-332 of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to overtime parking.
Moved to postpone to January 10, 2023.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Nicholson, seconded by Councilman Bowman to be postponed until January, what is the date?
10th.
10th, 2023. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Ordinance 216, amend in the 2022 Capital Improvements Budget. So moved. And this one needs to be postponed till the December 31st.
Move.
Move postponed.
Move postponed to December 31st.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Jackson to postpone this item till the 31st of December. Any questions or comments? Not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Ordinance 217, amend in the 2022 Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund Budget. It needs to be postponed to 31st.
Motion to postpone until the December 31st meeting.
Second.
Moved by the chair, seconded by Councilman Jackson. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Quick move. Motion passed with five.
Ordinance 218, amend in the 2022 General Fund Budget. Move to postpone to December 31st.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, seconded by Councilman Jackson to be moved to postpone until December 31st. Are there any questions or comments? If not, let's vote.
Motion passed with five.
Ordinance 219, to amend Chapter 26, Article 7, Section 26-274 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to execution of contracts associated with purchases.
Motion. Motion to postpone to the 31st.
Second.
Chair, seconded by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion passes with five.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be removed from the table today?
There is not.
On my, the item, District, the TIF district, I'd like for it to be moved to the...
I can't hear what you said.
I'd like for it to be, remain on the next agenda.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
What the next one, 1231?
Thank you. We have no property standards or MPC, ZBA, or ABO appeals to consider today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
There is none.
Madam Clerk, do you have any additional communications?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
There are Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Does any council members have any additional communication? We have a request from the city attorney to go in executive session to discuss the following. Madam Clerk, would you read it into the records?
Yes, Kathy Malone Stone et al. versus the City of Shreveport. And that's docket number 627082A. And then also T. Scott Pernici, Michael Jones, and Mark Defada individually and on behalf of a class of similarly situated persons versus the City of Shreveport. And that's coming from Louisiana Supreme Court, docket number 2022-C-1578. So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor. Seconded by Councilman Nicholson that we go into executive session. If there are no questions or comments, let's vote. Thank you. And that passes, we now in... Okay, now in executive. Merry Christmas to all of you.